Creek City Council. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act as currently in effect under the Emergency Services Act, the Governor's Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19, and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920 issued on March 17th, 2020, that allows attendance by members of the City Council, city staff, and the public to participate and conduct the meeting by video conference. Video conference locations are not open to the public. To provide a live remote public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID is 924-80234644, and the passcode is 598367. When I open the public comment period, use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only, which will alert the staff that you have a public comment you would like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raised hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. Please wait your turn and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. As the council is conducting these meetings via video conference and given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted have been and will be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be read separately into the record. Under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda only, and therefore, public comment will be taken during council consideration of the item. Should you choose to not provide comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways. YouTube Live, you can visit the city of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel, or by cable broadcast Comcast Channel 28 in the incorporated Walnut Creek area, Ross Moore Wave Channel 29, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and on livestream, which is on the city's website. Now, at this time, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, with the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Darling.
Here.
Councilmember Haskier.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Mayor Proton Francois.
Here.
And Mayor Will.
Here. Also, the next item on the, excuse me, the next item on the agenda is public communications, but as stated previously under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda only. Therefore, public comment will be taken during the council consideration of the item. So next on the agenda is the consideration item titled "Presentation of Consultant's Report Regarding Community Listening Sessions." And this time, I invite staff to provide the staff presentation, and I'll turn this over to Dan Buckshai, City Manager.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Dan Buckshai, City Manager, and I'd like to start out by thanking everyone for their efforts regarding the numerous listening sessions that occurred over the last several months. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear from our independent consultants, Jason Seals and Associates, who administered all the listening sessions so that they can summarize and share with the community and with your council what they heard firsthand in each of the listening sessions. There's a little bit of background. This effort began over a year ago, which is hard to believe already, and was intended to occur last spring. We were targeting March or April to hold these listening sessions. But as we all know, unfortunately, they had to be postponed as a result of the pandemic. And not only did they have to be postponed, they had to be completely reconfigured because they had been intended to occur in person, and now they had to occur over Zoom and over, you know, other forms of electronic media, if you will, as opposed to occurring in person. So I also want to give even more thanks and acknowledge the city staff that have been involved in this effort and the small subgroup of FOSAF members who've been working together on this very difficult topic in order to help ensure that everyone who wanted to have a say and be heard on these topics had an opportunity to do so. And with that, I'm going to introduce our Walnut Creek Assistant City Manager, Terry Kilgore, who is going to provide more detail and background information, and then we'll introduce our speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Dan. Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I wanted to give you a little context on the intent of these listening sessions as well as our goals for bringing this forward to you in the format that we have this evening. As Dan mentioned, this began as an idea that was jointly explored with FOSAF. And the concept is that by co-sponsoring citywide listening sessions, we could create the opportunity for a wide range of people to share their diverse perspectives and experiences on mental health, public safety, and even the death of Miles Hall. The concept is straightforward, that by listening to voices that we can't always hear, there might be learning, that by talking about our different perspectives, there could be understanding. Dr. Ralph Nichols began the study of listening as a science, and he noted that one of the most basic of all human needs is the need to understand and to be understood. And the best way to understand people is to listen to them. So while the concept is simple, I think all of us know it is often harder to do, especially when we don't agree with the person speaking. So tonight, we're asking the council to do something a little different. This is not a typical agenda item. This was never about creating a representative sample or presenting that we were representing the views of the entire community. It was not about researching trends or analyzing what other communities had done, and it's not about taking a specific action this evening. There's going to be time for all of those things in the coming months. We really are in the middle of the journey in terms of looking inward and figuring out how we can continuously improve. So rather, tonight is about hearing the voices of those who chose to participate. Tonight, we're asking you to simply listen with an open mind, to see things from another point of view, even if you disagree, and to seek to understand. So with that framing, I will turn it over to Jason Seals and Associates. Jason and Selena Wilson are consultants who led us on this journey, and they were unanimously selected by Committee of the City and key FOSAF members. So Jason, please take it away.
Jason, you're on mute.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for joining us this evening for, we have an opportunity to kind of share some higher level themes and ideas that we recorded in our listening sessions. But first, I'd like to review the process taken by myself and my colleagues. And so let me share my screen so I can walk everyone through the information obtained. My colleagues and I began our journey reaching out to stakeholders. Those stakeholders included FOSAF, members of the Walnut Creek Police Department, law enforcement, the Mental Health Evaluation Team, members of Walnut Creek Chief Advisory Board, staff members from the Contra Costa County Behavioral Service Department, and representatives from the Family Justice Center. We used that time to gain information about how do we want to design these listening sessions, what their structure should be, and who were the audience that we should tap into. After speaking with all of our stakeholders and thinking about what the need was, we drafted up these objectives. We thought about the importance of providing those personally impacted by mental health, racism, anti-blackness, and the intersection of these two experiences with an opportunity to express their perspectives and opinions. Additionally, providing residents from marginalized racial and ethnic groups a safe space to discuss their experiences, perceptions regarding the potential inequitable treatment in the city while engaging in a collecting and rebuilding process. We recognized too that the concept of healing and rebuilding was a starting place and not the ending place with the listening sessions. We also wanted to acknowledge harm in identifying how harm may be reduced while identifying hopes and possibilities, needs and urgencies from the stakeholders as well as community members and those that were a part of the listening sessions. Exploring the distinct, the distinction between policing and public safety and the overall goals of these efforts. Exploring options for response to mental health crises that are not principally dependent upon city, upon police actions. And then lastly, identifying the challenges and concerns that police personnel, dispatchers, supervisors, and officers have in response to mental health crises. So these objectives led our sessions. And in those sessions, we really wanted to be thoughtful about people having an opportunity to speak and share without there being input from outsiders. So as it was stated previously, and I want to reiterate, both myself and Selena Wilson and I that are part of Jason Seals and Associates, our job was to really just record information. We did this using Stormboard. For those that don't know Stormboard, it is a platform that you can use online to record data. And so in our sessions, the participants that were sharing in these listening dialogue sessions could actually see the information they were sharing go up on the actual Stormboard. And so as we are sharing tonight, please know that the information that is shared is verbatim in the sense that whatever people said, we use that in our actual report. We took away names because we did stress in the listening session that it was confidential. And so as we speak about different groups, we'll speak about law enforcement or community members or city employees, but we won't say any names, and no names are included in the report. We did that intentionally, and when we used Stormboard, we were only capturing information. So that meant that as someone spoke, no names were captured, just the words. And so if I was in a session and I had 10 people, I just recorded the thoughts of 10 people. I never recorded any names. And so this way, we keep the information confidential as we shared with those that participated. And also, we wanted to make sure that we were capturing information as it was said. And so as we were going through and capturing information, there would be times that I might say, could you please repeat that? Or did I capture that correctly? Does this look like what you said? Just to ensure that I wasn't putting my own thoughts up and that it was in its most authentic state. And so as we extracted these things that we're sharing with you tonight, we went through all the material that was in the Stormboard, and we correlated the main themes. And so all of the information that's inside of the actual document is really information that was extracted out in its most rawest form. And so there isn't any interpretation. And in the points in which we, we recorded information, we also included important words like perceived because we also recognize that someone might have said something that actually didn't reflect what was real, but we wanted to make sure we captured it exactly as it was. And so there is no inference being made or any information that isn't reflective of what people share. We wanted to make sure it was very authentic in that state. As you see here on this next slide, this is an overview of our process. What I spoke to previously is we wanted to ensure that we got input from our stakeholders, and we also wanted to make sure we got input from community members. And so we built out a questionnaire, and the questionnaire was open to anyone that either participated or didn't. And we wanted to get feedback because we didn't want to just get those that could come, but we also wanted to make sure that if people could not attend the sessions, they also had an opportunity to share their thoughts. And we'll share in the presentation some of the actual feedback that came in the questionnaire. And so in the listening sessions, we did a total of nine, six community listening sessions, which included people of color, allies, youth, those impacted by mental health crises. We also had a session with law enforcement, city officials, and then we had a collective dialogue where we allowed for the community to come together with law enforcement and city employees. And this is where all of our information comes from, extracted straight from this place. And what people have received is our analysis and our recommendations. And so tonight, I'll spend most of my time going over what came out of the listening dialogue sessions. And if time allows, I will, you know, uplist some of the recommendations. What I would encourage is that because we're giving, you know, a larger glance at it, and I'm doing some summarization, I think it's important that people actually read the details. We know this document is going to be used in the future to continue this work that has been started over a year ago now. So in terms of the questionnaire, we asked these three survey questions. What is your vision for public safety and wellness in the city of Walnut Creek? What do you see as the biggest challenge in terms of law enforcement in the city of Walnut Creek? And how do you describe the current climate in Walnut Creek as it relates to race, racism, and/or racial justice? And so there was 65 participants that responded, and as you can see, 47 of them lived in Walnut Creek. Seven of them worked in Walnut Creek. We had three of them that went to school in Walnut Creek. We had three that owned a business in Walnut Creek. And then we had 16, I often visited Walnut Creek. And I think one of the things that I wanted to note here is that in this questionnaire, we recognize that there might have been some overlap, meaning that someone might actually be a business owner and live in Walnut Creek, and they could not actually respond to both. They had to respond to one or the other. And so we wanted to note that just to have transparency in what was recorded and what was shared. Additionally, the information that we took from this is also captured in essay form so people can have an idea of what the information was that came out and how people felt about those three questions. So in terms of the actual report, we've broken it down in terms of the table of contents into an overview and acknowledgement, some operating definitions. So as people read through the actual document, they have understanding of what is being said. Some of those concepts such as 5150, allyship, diversity, equity, some of these words are used in various settings and have various meanings. So we wanted to contextualize the reading by offering those definitions. We also talk about our approach, some of which I'm going over tonight. We also will spend most of our time tonight, and there is a large section that speaks to the barriers, challenges, concerns, what we see as be the key themes and insights. And the next section is the strengths and assets. When we did our actual listening sessions, we spent a portion of the time in breakout groups going over what were barriers, challenges, and concerns. And so the three areas of focus here, people could actually share. What did they see as being a barrier, a challenge, or a concern as it related to policing, public safety, racial climate, mental health and wellness? And we did the same thing as it related to strengths and assets, where people can talk about, what were some of the strengths that they saw in terms of policing and public safety, racial climate, mental health, and healing? And then we spent some more time doing visioning. So thinking about what were the challenges and barriers, but then also taking them a step further in that process and helping them to envision, what do we want public safety or policing to look like in Walnut Creek? How should the racial climate feel and impact those that live there or those that frequent the area? And what should mental health or wellness and healing look like? What should the response be? And so those, the information that was shared out is captured, and we'll go over some of that. And we also did our part, which is after we heard all of the information and we correlated the information, we thought about, what is needed? What is needed to help support the vision that was identified as it relates to policing and public safety, the racial climate or mental health wellness and healing? We thought about some of the things that were happening in other cities. We thought about things that were happening at the county level. And we looked at certain research that came from leading institutions such as Stanford. Jennifer Eberhart has done a lot of research around policing and looking at how to create different types of experiences for people that have interactions with police. And so definitely have a portion there. And then we did some analysis, recommendations, and then we also offer references and referrals. And so the, the report is broken down into that area. And so what I want to do now is somewhat jump ahead and kind of share some of the information as it relates to these three focal areas. And so in the section where we talk about barriers, challenges, and concerns, we uplift these areas in terms of policing and public safety, racial climate, mental wellness, and healing. And one of the things that came out that we just wanted to highlight that we also made sure that we highlighted inside of the report is based on the input from the community listening sessions, you know, and the questionnaire that I shared, that several themes came about, and some of those themes were general in terms of them crossing over the different stakeholders that we actually engage with, and some of them were different. We would say that we would like to recognize that across the board that there was an acknowledgement with each of the stakeholder groups that the death of Miles Hall was tragic and that there was a general desire to prevent tragedies like that from reoccurring again. And so we saw some overlap. And in mental health specifically, across the board, amongst community members, law enforcement, and city employees, there was a general consensus that police officers are not best equipped to handle mental health crises, with the exception of those trained to serve on the mental health evaluation team. There was also a perception that among some community members, the presence of the police during a mental health crisis may further escalate a situation or criminalize mental health illness. Among community members, there seemed to be a perception that there was no alternative outside of the police to respond to mental health crises. Additionally, some community members also indicated that they were afraid to call 911 when a family member was experiencing mental health crises, given the potential risk of escalation, the risk of force, particularly lethal force, being used against the family member. Members of law enforcement indicated that they often are not called to respond to mental health crises until the situation has escalated at which, at which the point they are mandated to 5150 the person experiencing mental health crises. Across the board, with all stakeholders, that being community, law enforcement, and other city employees expressed frustration with a lack of inadequate long-term care for those experiencing mental health crises. In their experience, 5150 has become a revolving door for people experiencing chronic mental health illnesses. And inside of the document, they expound further on the challenges around that being a dynamic. In terms of the racial climate, many community members shared the opinion that Miles Hall was at greater risk of lethal force because he was young, he was a black man. They expressed concern that racial bias was not acknowledged as a significant factor in those, I'm sorry, in the shooting of Miles Hall. While the vast majority of mental, of community members that attended the listening session believe that systemic racism is a real issue that has impacted the Walnut Creek community for decades, some community members who responded to the anonymous survey believe that the concerns specific to racial injustice are not valid. And inside the document, we speak about that further because we felt that it was important to provide the spectrum of thoughts as it related to the racial climate. There are some that have acknowledged that there is some major dissonance between how law enforcement and community members interpret the disproportionate rate of black and brown people being arrested in Walnut Creek. It was acknowledged that some believe that the folks that are being incarcerated or that are having what is considered to be unhealthy engagement with police officers aren't residents of the Walnut Creek community. They might be outsiders that are frequent, frequencing the Walnut Creek community, maybe for shopping or other purposes. Some community members share experience in what they believe they experienced racial profiling, racism, and in the city of Walnut Creek, even as long-term residents with children. Some people have shared that they experienced having racial slurs directed towards them in schools, black residents experiencing higher rates of traffic stops. Others cited experiencing in which they felt were given a pass because they were white. And so we wanted to make sure we captured those things, and as stated previously, there is more content in detail to kind of expound upon the racial climate. In terms of public safety and policing, some members of the Walnut Creek community expressed concern regarding the ways in which the national narrative about law enforcement and policing is impacting the way they are viewed in general. Some officers felt that police officers are generalized in ways that is insulting, disheartening, and not reflecting their intentions. Some officers expressed they do not believe systemic racism exists in general and/or with policing. Others expressed they do believe systemic racism exists and indicated that they have personally witnessed and/or experienced systemic racism. Many community members and some city employees expressed concerns and frustrations with what they saw as a lack of transparency, accountability, and compassion in response to the shooting of Miles Hall. Some saw the response from police departments and city leadership as a defensive means of evading any form of accountability and missed opportunities to demonstrate compassion. Some community members and employees expressed concerns regarding what they see as a lack of sufficient support for law enforcement, including adequate training and treatment for trauma and chronic stressors experienced on the job. We also recognize that some city, some community members who responded to the survey shared concern that outgoing protests might have escalated to riots, looting, and violence since May 31st. So in terms of strengths and assets, we've broken it down again inside of the report similar to what you see here on the slide, looking at mental health crises response, racial climate, public safety, and policing, and leadership, and city employees. In terms of what we've heard around strengths and assets, in terms of mental health, it was said that the community of Walnut Creek is relatively wealthy, and so there should be adequate financial support that could help with some of the changes as it relates to mental health. Many community members see the mental health evaluation team as an asset specific to mental health crises response, as it was shared above. And FOSAF research advocacy. And FOSAP research advocacy legislative proposals specific to mental health crises um, supports were also cited as a strength. As it relates to the racial climate, many community members see that, that there's a growing awareness um, and concerns regarding systemic racism um, as an asset, as well as the first step towards progress. Um, diversity and representation in increasing in certain pockets of Walnut Creek, which is regarded as a strength by some stakeholders. And people saw the listening sessions itself as, as, as an asset and strength. And there were individuals that believed that the growing awareness amongst young people was also a strength. That there seems to be a greater population of younger people of the Walnut Creek community that are concerned about what is going on in the community. In terms of public safety and policing, uh, the chief community advisory board was seen as a strength. Um, because it has been used as a sounding board um, to the chief of police and provided a channel for a cross-section of the community members to weigh in on matters specific to policing. Some community members cited that the research and advocacy efforts of FOSAP as well as spoke to previously was also a strength as it related to public safety and policing. And the Walnut Creek Police Department implemented the CARES program um, based on a national model um, to assist officers in their ability to support individuals with autism. Whereby parents can introduce officers to their children and file key information on the ways in which their children should be engaged was also seen as a strength. In terms of city leadership and employees, many city employees cited that there is a strong foundation in place as it relates to cross-departmental collaborations, so the partnerships. Um, but they also said they felt like those partnerships um, could be enhanced to serve the community at a higher level. Some employees also cited that engagement from members of the community was an asset, uh, particularly as it related to their insights with city leadership. And then the last point I'll share is that some city employees also cited that the city's partnership with FOSAP um, was an asset and that they feel like it has, it has resulted in an increased accountability um, and innovation as it, as it's linked to the community listening session that took place. And that it can also support further development. So what we heard in terms of visioning um, fell into these three areas in terms of increased awareness and accessibility, um, cultural humility, equity and racial justice, public safety and policing. So in terms of increased awareness and accessibility, many community members would like to see an increased awareness regarding the true experience of those who experience mental health crises in order to humanize and de-stigmatize people who have these misunderstood experiences. There is a desire across the board um, for more stable, long-care options for those um, who are discharged after receiving intense mental health treatment in order to ensure that they are fully prepared to sustain their mental health with adequate support. Some stakeholders would also like to see an adequate number of mental health experts who are able and willing to respond to mental health crises without the presence of police to place more of a focus on mental health and enable police officers to focus on enforcing the law. As it relates to cultural humility, equity and racial justice, some community members would like to see the city to demonstrate an increased willingness to address the needs of black, brown, indigenous and other people, other people of color needs. Additionally, they hope to see the city council come to honor these communities in a way in which no longer feel like there is a need for community listening session. Some community members would like to see more representation of marginalized groups elected to leadership positions and other key decision-making roles within the city, including black and brown candidates and those with mental health and key leadership decision-making roles. As it relates to policing and public safety, some community members indicated they ideally envisioned law enforcement and city leadership truly acting as their neighbors and demonstrating their actions that they will be a part of the community while recognizing their role in a power structure. Some community members wished to see a much more expansive public approach to public safety that focuses more on providing supports um, to, to decrease crime such as uh, increase access to adequate food, housing, medical treatment and cultivating an environment that allows people to truly feel safe. Some members of law enforcement indicated that they would like to have more opportunities to engage and facilitate conversations with members of the community to generate a more shared understanding. Some people across all stakeholder groups indicate that they would like to see more accountability. Some community members want to see more accountability from city leadership as well as law enforcement as it relates to what is perceived to be harm, mistakes and room for improvement. So here we have what we identified as our gap analysis. And so as we have received all the information from the listening sessions and, you know, thought about all of the barriers and, and thought about the strengths and then did some reviewing of the vision, we thought about, okay, so how do we get to the next place? And so that's where we came in with our recommendations. Um, a lot of the visioning was very helpful for the recommendations. And so the visioning that took place, um, I share some of that with you all. And as I shared previously, there is more um, to be reviewed. And so I would encourage people to read so they can um, see the details expounded upon inside of the actual document. In terms of an analysis and recommendations, we wanted to make sure we captured this piece. Um, I know we're running up, looks like I've been talking now for almost twenty-eight minutes. Um, we wanted to show this model just to kind of remind people.
Hey, Jason, you're fine. This is important, so please take the time you need.
Yeah, thanks. So we wanted to make sure we post this model back up again so people can kind of see the process in which we landed on these recommendations. And so the analysis of recommendation falls into these four bullet points here, which is mental health crises, supports and de-stigmatize, de-stigmatize, de-stigmatization. Um, rebuilding trust and community, increased collaboration and partnership, training for law enforcement, city leadership and city employees and instituting leading practices. So we spent some time really being thoughtful as I shared previously about what was shared with us. And also thought about what is happening across the nation as it relates to public safety. Thinking about what are some of the things that are happening, not just um, on the national level, but also what's happening in neighboring cities, what's happening in the county. And so as it relates to mental health crisis and support, um, because there was a general perception um, that there was a lack of sufficient and accessible mental health resources within the city of Walnut Creek. Um, we thought it was important to really, to really focus um, our attention around what could happen differently in the city, um, that could be a more effective response and a supportive response. And for our community members to feel as though what is said to be there is accessible. And um, when it is accessed, um, greater harm um, doesn't happen. And so we definitely recommended that the city partner with the county to sponsor a campaign designed to de-stigmatize mental health crises and increase awareness of services through the county and the community-based organizations within the county. We recognize the county already has an initiative and we thought it would be in the best interest for the city to align themselves, which is, which is, which with, is already taking place. The city should consider increasing the number of clinicians and trained officers assigned to support uh, the mental health evaluation team within the city of Walnut Creek. We also thought about as it, as it appears that the county, um, mobile crisis response team is underutilized as a resource. The city should investigate this further to determine whether it is a matter that can be resolved through awareness building for the community, or is there a need to develop um, a similar alternative to the city of Walnut Creek? We also thought it would be important to think about, um, how, how the city might want to consider partnering with an agency um, to introduce like the Clubhouse intentional model. Uh, the Clubhouse International, sorry, International Model offers people living with mental health opportunities for friendship, employment, housing and education um, to access medical and psychiatric services in a single caring and safe environment through evidence-based approach. Moving down to rebuilding trust and community, we thought a lot about this. Um, this came up um, as a theme throughout the listening sessions. And as spoken to previously, there was a bullet point um, in terms of objectives that focused on this idea of healing. And we know that healing can't come without trust. And so we thought it was important to make sure we spent some time really thinking about what are some strategic things that the city can do. Um, and so we said, following the recent events, including the shooting of Miles Hall, recent protests and respective response from law enforcement and city leadership, there is a growing distrust. And so we thought that it would be important, um, that, um, there be work that is done to rebuild trust, um, that is transparent and that, um, the city, um, takes ownership um, in terms of leading that effort as it relates to rebuilding trust. And we see that happening, um, through continuing some of these listening sessions. I think based in what we heard, the listening sessions were supportive, giving, um, people that feel as though their voice isn't heard, um, bringing up topics that are relevant. Um, those listening sessions were needed and could continue to be a helpful tool to build trust. Um, we thought there'd be a good opportunity to host community-wide um, listening sessions that focused more so on, um, learning. So understanding, um, anti-racism, understanding cultural humility, uh, mental health and wellness um, and other matters specific to social, um, equity. And we, we felt like this should be led by experts in the field. And so inside of the report, we've identified leading ex, experts locally that could provide that service and support. We also thought about um, the, the need for multimedia learning in this day and age. And because of COVID, uh, multimedia has become, um, a helpful learning tool. And so we thought about there being multimedia learning tools, um, that could support, um, learning as it relates to mental health, um, as it relates to, um, racial disparities and social inequities. Uh, one of the concerns that came up is that there felt like there was a disparity between, um, information and who understands racial dynamics uh, better than others. And so to that point, these listening sessions could address some of those things. Um, because there seems to be, as spoken to in the report, there are some people that believe systemic racism exists, some people that don't. And we know that there is a gap in terms of learning. So there are some people that are more well-versed, more well-read, have had more personal or, and or lived experiences. And so to create a foundation that is equitable and supportive in terms of learning, it would be helpful to have those spaces to continue learning and help the city um, have some grounding in these concepts as they begin to explore what equity looks like for the city of Walnut Creek. Um, we thought it would be important, um, that the city acknowledge past harms um, in terms of, to this end, we recommend that the city of Walnut Creek issue a formal apology um, for legalized discrimination, um. And we use the example of redlining that has happened. Um, and so we know there's a history, um, that exists in Walnut Creek that is, that reflects not just, um, social inequities, but also a racial harm. And so as the city thinks about how to repair that harm, um, being transparent and acknowledging that begins to build trust and creates a space um, to move, uh, future work ahead. We also put something here that we thought was really important. We saw it being practiced in the private sector and in public sector. Is that we think there should be, um, what we call volunteer time off, which is a policy that can be utilized by law enforcement. Um, in other cities, we saw there were, like I said, in the private sector and public sector, that people were, they were offering um, either employees, um, or folks in law enforcement, uh, uh, believe where, where it was more probation, offering what we call VTO, volunteer time off. And we saw this as an opportunity for law enforcement to actually be engaged in community work. So to take off, you know, the badge and, you know, uh, the clothing and engage in the community. Um, we saw this as an opportunity if officers were given paid time off to be engaged in the community to build relationships, to engage in community service, um, and really have a different experience. I think what we recognize in our work, that if trust is to be built, trust has to be built on multiple levels. Um, levels in terms of the city, in terms of leadership, in terms of law enforcement. And those within the community that feel the distrust might be more open to, um, having um, new interactions, um, might be more forgiving, um, might be open to more collaborations, um, if they had newer experiences. As it relates to, um, increased collaborations and partnerships, we identified that, um, the city should deepen its collaboration with county agencies initiatives to create awareness of county services available to Walnut Creek residents um, and to exchange in best practices. And so what is already happening, um, at the county level that supports, um, either wellness um, and begins to offer communities greater access, um, that alignment might just offer a robust a more, a more robust offering, which speaks to one of the barriers that was identified, which is there is perceived to be a lack of resources available. And so if, whether the perception is real or not, um, I think it's important that if there are more resources but people can a- access them, that is still a barrier. And so, you know, in the listening session, we heard that there weren't enough resources. And then, you know, we've, we've done some research to locate some of those, um, resources. However, uh, most people won't actually do research to find supports if they're not readily, readily available or, um, at someone's fingertips. And in a crisis, it's very difficult to access things, um, if you don't have them, uh, you know, in plain sight, so to speak. We also talked about the need for training and we are very thoughtful about training. Uh, my colleague is, um, she's, she's very proficient in learning science. And we, we took a, we took a lot of time kind of teasing out what training looked like and what we thought about it because we recognized training doesn't address how people mi- might have a fixed mindset. And we also recognize that training has to be, it has to be coupled with a willingness to learn. And as it relates to the racial climate, it would be important for whether it's law enforcement, city officials, or city employees, for everyone to acknowledge that systemic racism is real. Research shows that if you don't believe something is real and you go through a training, you're not going to be open to receiving that information because you already have an opposition because of what your belief is. And so we thought it would be really important that um, everyone take these trainings. And so it becomes a foundation of learning, that everyone has a similar reference point. Um, that everyone has a shared experience around this information and that there is more of a community of learning rather than just pointing to one group and saying, this group needs to learn. But I think as you think about shifting the community, there should be a collective uh, a collective space for collective learning and where there is a s- a starting point for the community, I mean, for the collective, rather than just having some. And so we acknowledge that there should be trainings um, that are led by experts in systemic racism, um, cultural humility. And the principles around cultural humility um, is a commitment to um, learning. And so there is no point in which someone has taken enough classes or been in enough trainings where they have it. It's more of, I'm curious and I will continue to engage in a learning process through the duration of my life. Um, there's also a component of cultural humility that says, um, you have to be curious about other people and that the curiosity allows you to build upon your knowledge and that knowledge not being a destination, but a process. And the last piece is that um, the power structure is acknowledged. And so if the city um, of Walnut Creek is thoughtful about cultural humility, it means that those that are in power will also take up the um, the charge of being continuous learners and being curious. And then also factoring in this idea that power is to be considered when you're thinking about um, equity, when you're thinking about how people are harmed, when you're thinking about issues such as um, what has brought us to the table, whether it's around mental health crises and issues or systemic racism. We also talked about this idea around con- uh, courageous conversations, which is a way to really think about how to have effective dialogue, not to necessarily have conflict, but for understanding. Um, we talked about there being training for officers specifically around how to engage with youth, recognizing that they, there are um, de-escalation strategies that should be used to support young people because the ways in which young people respond to authority figures and where their brain development is might be very different than those of age. We also thought it would be important to think about having training around uh, trauma-informed and healing-centered approaches, as well as restorative justice. Um, thinking about when harms are done, how do we center the harm, center those that have been harmed and let those that have been harmed articulate what needs to happen to resolve that harm? And of course, as we spoke about previously, there needs to be training around um, mental health crisis response, really to identify signs and symptoms of mental health crises and how to utilize um, a range of stabilization and de-escalation techniques through compassion and in a healless and in a healing-centered approach. Um, in terms of um, instituting leading practices, we offered this because as I stated previously, we thought about what was happening um, around the nation. And there are other larger cities, of course, um, that might have more capacity. But we just still thought that um, these practices were relevant because they were taking a step towards really thinking about um, how to create equity and they had equity plans and they were measuring their strides as they were um, moving towards uh, racial equity and they were communicating. And so what, that's why we also included this because we thought that to communicate these things once again got to um, this place of rebuilding trust that um, if there is a plan and if that plan is being implemented, whether there is progress or the, there's a stall, so to speak, that the, the work that was happening would still be seen and heard and that transparency uh, builds trust. Um, or at least keeps people informed enough to see that those that have power um, are thoughtful about their power, but also thoughtful about who they're um, who they're serving in their position. Um, and so we identified those things as well. Um, and one of the things that we said specifically is, um, in, in keeping with the, the intensive research and strategic planning, um, we thought it might be important to um, implement maybe um, a, a office of racial equity and social justice. Um, because there is a position of director of equity um, at the county level, uh, it would just seem fitting to have a larger effort that could address some of the needs. And so that being said, the last portion in the document um, is resources and referrals. We've included some articles um, of some researchers that really speak to um, some of the barriers that were brought up and some of the issues that's been experienced by the community. Um, we also have outlined some leading experts, as I spoke to earlier, that are local, that can also be of a support. And that concludes uh, my summary of the report.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, so I'm going to first go to the council and ask if anybody has any questions of Jason uh, regarding the report and I'm going to call on uh, council member Silva first.
Thank you, Mayor, and um, thank you to the consulting team and staff. But at this point, um, I don't have any questions, um, but I really look forward to hearing from comments from the public.
Great, thank you. Uh, yes, council member Darling.
Yeah, I echo uh, council member Silva's thanks. You know, you guys have obviously done a whole lot of work on this. Um, I have just a couple of questions. You know, when you're approaching something like this, where it's kind of a big ball and you're trying to tease it out into um, next steps and actions. Um, there was a couple of places where you're noticing that, you know, you talked about it on systemic racism. There's a diversity of viewpoints. People are in different places and understanding that. How do you go about joint fact-finding to, to try to close that understanding gap? Is that something you can do in the auspices of the task force? Or is it, you know, how do you go about, how would you go about closing that understanding gap?
Sorry about that, I was on mute.
That's okay.
Sorry. I think that's a longer process. I think part of what you're speaking to is that I think in communities um, in schools, I think there's always a gap around learning. And so I think that has to be a commitment from the city to provide opportunities to actually address that gap. I don't think it's an overnight process, but one of the things we did speak to is as it relates to employees, as it relates to law enforcement um, and leadership, I think some of that gap can be addressed by having a collective experience around some of these ideas as relates to social justice, racial inequities, things of that nature. Um, but I think you're always kind of teaching, so to speak, to the spectrum. Um, and I think that is a struggle. Um, and so I think they're, they're, to the point I made around cultural humility, it's a process around being curiosity, being, being curious, and it's a process around staying engaged. And I think the opportunities have to be readily available. I don't think we can trust that people are going to just do this work unless they're just committed to it. And I, this work is hard. This work is hard and it takes a lot of time and energy. And so unless you um, just have a desire to be in that learning space, I don't think people are going to just volunteer to sign up for.
Okay. Um, and then rebuilding trust, you talked there again about focused learning. Um, again, is that something that you envision happening kind of in the because there's probably learning on all sides. It's not just the city employees and the police department, but the community as a whole kind of coming together. Uh, because, you know, the police department are responding to their community's calls for service. And so it's a, you know, it's not just the police department, it's the community also. What's a good vehicle to look at that? We, we need to rebuild the trust between the community and the police um, on many different levels. What, what's the best vehicle to tackle that part of things?
Are you speaking to um, like the community learning or you mentioned two things?
Well, I, I'm, I'm struggling with this one. You had a lot of um, you know, learning experiences that would help us rebuild trust. And a lot of it ends up getting focused on the city staff itself and the police. But I can see a broader need in our community and.
One of the things that I mentioned was providing access to, to um, for um, I mentioned uh, sessions for understanding. So there can be community-based sessions where people can learn more about, uh, you know, social inequity, racial justice, learn about, you know, history that can inform healthier interactions. And, and I, and I think that we referenced that it's a both and, that the learning needs to happen on both sides. But we also recognize that one of the things that we heard um, in, in the community listening sessions, that there is there, there are a population of people that know more than others. And so they, that know more are carrying the weight, so to speak, to do the work around change. And those that don't know, um, it might be for various reasons. But um, even people that are newly engaged in this work around social justice or, you know, people that might be upset and might won't, might want change, they might be newer protesters in the, in the community. Um, I just think there has to be a space for people to engage in learning. So we talked about the multimedia where there could be recorded videos that people can access on their own time to have self-guided learning. Um, and so we see it being both and we talked about the importance of that because I think um, people have different information and people have different lived experiences. And I think one of the problems is that if you don't have the lived experience, you actually cause more harm trying to assume that your lived experience is similar. And I think that if you don't have that lived experience, the best thing you could do is learn from that group or learn about that person lived experience, but not try to say, oh, I can relate. Because usually what you think you're relating to is not what they are actually experiencing. And so it causes more harm.
Yeah, that, that thing where you can't really know what somebody else is going through in their shoes. Um, okay, I think that's it for me right now.
Yeah, and one thing I'll add from a learning sciences perspective is that learning is both cognitive and behavioral and relational. So to the point of motivation, uh, one of the key drivers uh, in motivating learning are our connections to people. And so, you know, we have to present information in this kind of linear way, but it's important to understand the ways in which these things work together. So we talk about these learning sessions and trainings, but we also talk about doing things like having community events that are heavily steeped in culture and um, bringing people together. Because as people start to build relationships with one another, um, that's going to help drive the desire to learn, but also create informal opportunities to learn. So there might be a festival, a Pan-African festival that is, you know, fun and relational, but there are opportunities to learn embedded in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Uh, yes, council member Haskew. You're on mute.
It's really cold where I am and so I've got gloves on and it's, it's hard to write when you have gloves on. Um, I, there is one thing that, first of all, it's very hard for me to get my head around the, the whole breadth of topics. Um, mental health is an entirely different milieu than um, social justice and, and racial um, diversity. And, and so it's kind of hard for me to mush it all together in one kind of learning opportunity. Um, one of the things I had concerns about when I was listening, and this is the question, is when we talk about trust, I'm hearing it's more everybody else and, and the, the city doesn't, doesn't have the right to trust the people that they're working with. Can you address that a little bit? Um, because I honestly personally feel like I have not been granted trust um, inappropriately.
Thank you. Uh, and I want to make sure that I'm understanding your question. You're, are you saying um, the city? Can, can you just restate the question? I just want to make sure.
I'm not very good at asking questions though. Um, and, and, and sometimes it's good if there's a translator. Let me, let me see if I can find a way to say it. I think there is a prejudice toward the council and that people just don't trust us. We can say that we are doing things, we can say that we're following up, we can do and accomplish a huge amount. And yet the response is you didn't do it, or you didn't do it well enough, or you didn't do it fast enough. Um, that's kind of the level of what I'm trying to explain. Does that give you something to build your answer on?
Yes, thank you. That, that helped me with context. So um, I will share what we heard in listening sessions and I will share some perspective just in leading practice that may help with that. So some of what we heard from at least some community members is that um, one of the things that uh, eroded trust is what was uh, how the initial reaction or response to the shooting of Miles Ha- Hall, the perceived reaction, which would include things from body language, including body language, uh, would include things like um, what was said or not said in official statements or unofficial statements. And I think one of the, the underlying factors that wasn't said in so many words, but from a leading practice standpoint, is that whenever there are power differentials, um, to quote Spider-Man, it's kind of where there's great power, there's great responsibility. So the expectation of city council, to your point, is high that as leaders, people expected a certain kind of response um, from everything, like I said, to affect, to actual words, that for some people, they didn't get what they were expecting. And from their perspective, they were lacking, uh, they wanted to see more of what they felt would be compassionate or empathic um, kind of response. And again, this is what we heard from the perspective of some folks who felt like there wasn't much trust. Um, part of the challenge is that rebuilding eroded trust, whether it's based on perceived or actual experiences, is slow, the, the speed is slow. And, and this is one of the reasons we are recommending that city council go through the train, the same trainings, more or less, with the exception of uh, some of the de-escalation strategies that we're recommending to law enforcement because some of these have to do um, with things like cultural cues or behavioral um, ways that one might convey certain things that might be different in different cultural contexts. And that's something we also talked about in terms of mental health delivery. Whenever you have, uh, there are, again, there's fields of studies around this. Whenever you have, uh, there are, again, there's fields of studies around this, how cultural cues are different um, in different communities. And so in some communities, it may be accepted that this facial expression means I'm listening. And in others, it may mean you're not listening, right? So part of it is understanding what are the potential signals people are making. And again, what are words that may be triggering to people versus words that might be more universally resonant? These are all kind of some considerations and why we think it's really key for leadership to also go through some of these trainings to understand um, what could be some potential, you know, key ways of building relationships with different kinds of communities uh, that could make the difference in terms of how you are relating and connecting to people and being understood. Because I, it sounds like from your end, perhaps the senses that intention and uh, perception are not lining up from your perspective, right? Um, and so that is why we're recommending some of these trainings like cultural humility.
Okay, so, so um, do you recommend that we do that in a combined method with those of the one side versus the other together? Um, because I have a concern that when, when um, it's like when you're a boss and you go into the coffee room, um, everybody kind of stiffens up and, and reacts differently. Is, is it even possible that that can be effective? Did I do better with that question?
Oh, it was very pointed. Um, I think that it can depend. Certainly, I would imagine that uh, it would make sense to have some separate sessions very tailored to different audiences, given that the nature of the context in which you apply these concepts may be different. Um, so it would be appropriate for some of those sessions to be very specific to members of leadership versus those in particular departments. That said, you know, in general, there are some opportunities, important opportunities for there to be more shared engagement and learning. And we recognize that due to the Brown Act, there are sometimes limit, limitations to the ways in which city council can engage um, in certain kinds of conversations. But definitely think there needs to be more opportunities for informal engagement, informal relationship building. Hopefully that answered your question. So I do think it will be important to have separate space so that people feel safe in asking the kind of questions they may need to ask in those trainings without feeling uh, stifled either because they're in a position of leadership or not to speak freely.
So I have one more question, and that is that this community, and it's not only just the Walnut Creek community, but the community in our region is very multicultural. It isn't just like um, in some cities where there is a black component and a white component. We have Asians, we have Middle Easterns, we have, um, I'm trying to think of Russians, lots and lots of people. The amount of languages in the schools is almost in the hundreds of hundreds. Um, you know, how do we deal with all of these? And, and I, I personally would love to hear about all of them. I'd love to understand how I could communicate better with all of them, but it, it just isn't practical. And, and how do we make the choices and still get our work done?
So in the listening sessions, we did actually um, reach out to the APAC, our Asian Pacific Island community. Um, we did reach out to members of the Latino community, members of the uh, black community, those of African ancestry. Uh, we do actually think it is possible to um, have gatherings of community members and invites and create space for people to have cultural exchange. And so one of the, again, the ideas that was offered is to work with community members to put on different uh, cultural events that are um, self-created. So in, inviting community members to have and co-sponsor festivals and events where they have a certain amount of self-determination, where they are able to have the power to share what they think is important about their culture. Um, but their support from the, from, from the city, um, in terms of co-sponsoring the event and, and that sort of thing. So kind of an extension, you already, Walnut Creek has a great arts culture. So how can you infuse more culture in a way that gives community members the opportunity to lead? And reaching, there are a lot, there are plethora, and this kind of goes back to one of our um, general insights is that there's a lot of missed opportunity for collaboration, particularly between the city and the county. And so where are there opportunities for more collaboration? The, the county just recently stood up this office of uh, social equity or social justice and racial equity. How can the city uh, work with them more closely to see what work they're doing? And where are there opportunities to share in that? Because there are already a lot of uh, affinity groups based on these cultural um, identifiers at the county level and in pockets throughout the city. And we think that if you partner, that kind of legwork is already being done in a lot of ways. Um, and so it doesn't have to be done in isolation, particularly in the beginning. So to what degree can you be working with the county to be a part of what they're doing? And then see what are some things that might be transferable and very specific to our city where we might want to replicate on a, a smaller scale, or in some instances, just simply participate in the larger scale?
Thank you.
Uh, council member Francois.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh, thank you, Selena and Jason for the very comprehensive report and, and for the important work on these listening sessions. Some of my questions were already asked. One I had was what resources are there in the non-governmental organizational world? Have you seen any good partnerships between cities and NGOs on the issue of racial and social justice?
Certainly, I think in Alameda County, uh, there are a lot of good examples. And even frankly, at Contra Costa County, we see the partnership uh, between, for example, the Family Justice Center and the county. They work very closely together. Um, even in some instances, there are private entities that are playing a bigger role in stepping up um, to support certain initiatives. That said, um, if we look over to uh, Alameda County or cities like Oakland, you'll see instances where um, for mental health crisis supports, for example, there are an increasing number of collaboratives. So collaboratives uh, where the county may get different, help orchestrate uh, collaborative efforts of multiple agencies that serve different specific stakeholder groups or specific um, pockets of the community, you know, whether it be neighborhood or district-based, to make sure that there's more collaboration. Because again, when you zoom out, there are actually uh, some resources that may be under right now, because while these organizations are doing great work, they don't necessarily have the bandwidth to coordinate with one another. So the extent to which the city can help do the coordination work, there could be some greater efficiencies realized through agencies where you might have one that focuses more on youth, um, who's better able to, if you can help create those collaboratives, they might be able to have better referral pipelines. For example, in some counties, they are working on uh, creating these systems of no wrong door. And I don't know if y'all are familiar with this concept of no wrong door. But the, the theory behind it is that when you create a tight enough collaborative system, no matter where any, any door anyone walks into, it might not be the right door, but that door will lead to the right door. Because all of these systems are highly networked, to your point, across CBOs, you know, community-based organizations, county agencies, city agencies. And that is why we're really emphasizing uh, effort on collaboration, collaboration, collaboration. And that is where, again, uh, we think the city, in conjunction with the county, can potentially really do some great work around forming these collaboratives and investing in some of the logistically challenging work that comes with trying to create these um, these better alignments across these organizations and systems.
That's helpful, that, that's helpful. That, that, that makes sense to me. Uh, the other question I had might be a little more esoteric, but Jason referred to the idea that in order, you know, that knowledge is a process, not a destination. And how do you engage someone who, who doesn't have the willingness to learn or the mindset to learn? What, what sort of strategies do you employ there?
Yes, and I think that this is another instance where uh, leadership is key. So, you know, walking the walk, talking the talk. One of the recommendations we had is that we do think that the city should come up with an official declaration of where you as a city stand. What is your commitment to issues as it relates to racial justice, as it relates to equity for marginalized people? And to a point brought up earlier, while it may seem that the experiences of uh, black folks who may experience anti-blackness or folks experiencing personal uh, crisis or mental health crisis, the stigma, it might feel like a very different experience. And it is in many ways, but what is in common is those are marginalized experiences. So when you look at all forms of marginalization, whether it's happening on the basis of race or age or religion or visible or invisible disabilities, the, the common thread is that people are feeling outcasted or marginalized or stigmatized in some way. So if the city uh, creates a very specific stance as it relates to recognizing a where have people felt stigmatized? And this goes back to our point of acknowledging, and this is something you're seeing all across the country. Universities, everywhere from, you know, universities to uh, government institutions to private businesses are acknowledging past harms, even from hundreds of years ago, because there's a recognition that just because something isn't our fault, doesn't make it our, doesn't mean it's not our responsibility. So one of the things that we heard in some of the listening sessions, people reciting housing laws going back to the 1940s. And while those things may no longer be the law of the land in Walnut Creek, acknowledging and having an official declaration of these things really did happen, we acknowledge that they happened. Here is our feeling about what we need to do moving forward to address the generational fallout of these things. So I say all that to say, these are some of the ways that other entities, whether they're cities or other kind of institutions, are helping to motivate people to learn, is first by acknowledging the past and helping people understand how has the past, whether it's the very recent past of things that happened in 2019, 2020, things that happened further back, how have they um, motivated us as a city leadership to invest in these things? And if you're as a leader saying, we think this is important to invest in, we're not just checking a box, we think this is important. We are participating in this training, that is one level. And there's also another level of, again, that relationship building piece. And with any change management, whether you're implementing a new IT system or something much more emotionally charged, like addressing systemic racism, there are going to be some people who just have a very, very hard time adapting. And again, that's where accountability measures are important. So you have to have and think, if you're really serious about making a culture change, how is, how are things like participation in racial equity activities, whether they be trainings or whatever? How are those baked into things like performance assessments or regular training requirements? And again, obviously, you can't change hearts and minds through mandates, but the, the hope is that at least through exposure, you can plant some seeds and by leadership really making a, a statement about commitment, um, you can help illuminate for people that we're not just doing this to go through the motions. And so again, that doesn't, this doesn't solve for everything, but the idea is that hopefully over time, you can create culture change and people will either ride with that. And sometimes people, if they really, really don't believe in it, you may have some folks who say, this might not be for me. But ideally, you're creating an environment, a space where everyone feels supported to move along um, in that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I apologize, Matt, it's uh, Mayor Pro Tem Francois, of course, and I apologize for the misstep earlier. Selena, thank you. Jason, thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions right now, I'll reserve those for after we hear about, from public comment. But I do want to also thank staff for the countless hours that were put in. And uh, Jason and Selena, the, the countless hours that you put in as well and putting this all together uh, through eight sessions. Really appreciate that. So this will actually bring us to um, the time for public comment. And I do want to quickly remind people that this, this is actually not a listening session. This is the report on the listening sessions. Uh, so if you're able to uh, comment on the report of the listening sessions, that will actually be most helpful for council in our own deliberations. Um, so does any member of the public wish to provide public comments at this time? And please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you are connected by audio only. If you'd like to provide a public comment, for those who desire to provide public comment on this consideration item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their own remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been and will be posted during uh, this item to the company, to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. Also, please note that during public hearings and consideration items, group spokespersons are allotted 10 minutes in lieu of other members of the group speaking on the item. We trust that everyone will follow the rules. At this time, I will ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
Mayor, I do see multiple speakers, so we will go ahead and bring them in one by one. First.
If we have any group speakers, let's bring them in first.
Okay, first speaker is Penny Terry.
Hi, um, my name is Penny Terry. I'm a 15-year member of the Walnut Creek community. Good evening, Walnut Creek Mayor Wilk, Mayor Pro Tem Francois, City Council Members Silva, Darling and Haskew. I am speaking on behalf of the Friends of Scott, Alexis and Ton Hall Fosa, a group of citizens who came together to ask the city to make changes after Miles Hall was killed by the Walnut Creek Police while in the midst of a mental health crisis. In October of 2019, Fosa have conducted a large community forum to share our grief over Miles's death and to hear what our community wanted to do to address this tragedy. During this session, we heard about unequal treatment based on race in our community and the profound ways in which Miles's death impacted so many of our neighbors. While the ideal of community listening sessions to address the harm and subsequent damage to trust resulting from Miles's killing has been presented to the city by Fosa before that October, the interest in pursuing these sessions in collaboration with the city was only strengthened by what we heard and experienced during our community forum. We continue to push city leadership to create listening sessions, feeling that a citywide effort would be beneficial for city leaders to listen to citizens and neighbors talk freely outside of the limits of the public comment periods and about their experiences with racism and law enforcement's responses to mental health crises in Walnut Creek. To deeply listen and not defend, and from that listening, make substantive changes that start to make Walnut Creek a safer place and create a culture of belonging, accountability, equity and healing. Fosa is proud to have initiated this effort to, and to have worked with often difficult collaboration with the city, laying groundwork for rebuilding trust in our community, particularly for those most affected by mental illness and racism. We are grateful that the city dedicated time and resources to conduct these listening sessions. The Jason Seals and Associates report is for the most part comprehensive and contains recommendations which could be profoundly helpful if made actionable. We are pleased that the listening sessions lifted up voices that are often not heard. We particularly note that the listening sessions reinforce the need for 24/7 mental health crisis support. We appreciate the city council's leadership in continuing to advocate for those crucial services that will help ensure that what happened to Miles will never happen to another person in Walnut Creek. In addition to the call for more, more robust mental health crisis support, we wish to highlight the following key themes and insights from the consultant's report. One, the need for increased willingness by city leadership to address the needs of Black, Brown, Indigenous and other people of color. And two, a more explicit recognition of systemic issues that led, that lead to racial bias and a lack of real racial equity and justice. Um, we wish to draw attention to the following analysis and recommendation from the consultant's report. Um, following recent events, there's a growing distrust among some community members, city leadership and law enforcement. Viewing these community members as a vocal minority and discounting their voices perpetuates the marginalization of these communities members and also neglects the impact this distress has. members and also neglects the impact this distress has had on the collective tone of Walnut Creek. Two, key to rebuilding trust is transparency, ownership and community building. It is also critical that city and Walnut Creek PD leadership taking position that acknowledges that the existence of systemic racism in our city and society and how it appears in the form of implicit and explicit bias, the disproportionate treatment of minoritized racial and ethnic groups and the social inequities correlated with the rates of crime arrests and imprisonment. We anticipate the city will commit to taking deliberate action on the recommendations of the Jason Seals and Associates report. We hope that your process of creating and prioritizing those actions will follow the report's strong recommendation to include voices from across our community to co-create and implement real change. According to the report, it is critical to success to include the incoming diversity and inclusion task force, the chief community advisory board, FOSAF, members of Walnut Creek PD and others. FOSAF and the city agreed that Miles's death was a tragedy, but we still disagree on responsibility and accountability for his tragic killing. We feel that we have divergent narratives regarding Miles's death, specifically around police accountability, the timing of officers being returned to active duty and the need to improve police use of force policies and training. The listening sessions and subsequent actions taken by city leadership as a result of this report could provide a chance to recalibrate our relationship and for the city to rebuild trust with the community. We are encouraged to see the potential for movement. We welcome you to join in a meaningful partnership with the Miles Hall Foundation to create positive initiatives that the city can support, champion and help lead as you do with other nonprofit organizations working for the good of the community. We owe a debt of gratitude to the Hall family for their loving persistence in protecting families from the painful loss of future Miles Halls. Thank you Ton, Scott and Alexis Hall for turning pain into purpose. In closing, we pause to honor the life of Miles Hall by saying his name, Miles Hall. Thank you.
Thank you Penny and members of FOSAF. Suzie or Amy, I think Amy or Suzie might have gotten kicked off. Amy, do we have the next speaker?
Yes, I'll go ahead and bring in Gigi Crowder.
Thank you.
Thanks for allowing me to be here today. I first wanted to start off with reiterating something that Jason said earlier as he was speaking. He shared the fact that this work is very difficult work. I've worked with Jason in the past. I've been very nervous about tonight because I wasn't sure if I was going to hear all the things that I knew we should be hearing in the report. And I want to applaud you, Jason. I want to demonstrate cultural humility right now by sharing with you, I owe you an apology, you and Selena, because there were moments when I doubted whether you were going to be able to really give a report that would really honor the voices that showed up for the listening sessions. Because a lot of times when people were in roles like consultants, they hold back a little. You did. Especially when you share the fact that the city of Walnut Creek truly needs to apologize for some of the past hurts that it's inflicted on its community members. NAMI allowed me to really work alongside the Mount Hall Foundation and the Friends of Scott and Alexis and Ton Hall. And so I neglected a lot of the other stuff I would normally do for NAMI in an effort to make sure that everyone recognize how the loss of Miles impacted so many people, not just in the city of Walnut Creek, but also across the county. Whenever someone is seeking support and they lose their life while seeking mental health support, it's a tragic loss. So I started my very first public comment in Walnut Creek. And I hope that the council members were listening when I said Walnut Creek could lead the effort for a non-police response. And so now we have Dan Buckshai. It all relates.
Are you speaking on behalf of a group?
I am, I'm speaking for NAMI Contra Costa.
Okay, thank you. I just needed to know that for the timing. I didn't want to cut you off because you didn't mention.
Thank you, thank you. So Dan Buckshai has taken a leadership role from the city of Walnut Creek with the Non-Police Response Project. And I'm hoping that Walnut Creek could take a leading role in the efforts around making sure that services for those who live with mental health are also culturally responsive. I'm hoping that Walnut Creek will take a leadership role in working with the Hall Foundation of taking some of the recommendations that Jason Seals and Associate put forth and really it was demonstrated to me tonight that there's a lot of work to be done with the city council. There is a lack of knowledge about how to truly embrace all of these principles that you need to have around being culturally humble. And so I'm hoping that you will continue to work with the consultants, that you will honor what they've said, that you will digest it and that you will answer my email that I sent to you mayor around will, will the city of Walnut Creek join the other cities and having the Miles Hall Day of Remembrance? Which I sent you a proclamation and I'm hoping that I hadn't heard back from you, but I've heard back from six other cities that readily said yes. It's Black February is Black History Month. We want to be a part of this effort. When I hear silence through all these protests that we had, we heard silence is equal to violence or silence is equal to death. So I'm hoping that Walnut Creek will lead in all of the efforts since it was in Walnut Creek that we lost the precious and loving son of Ton Hall. So we also have an opportunity for Walnut Creek to participate in what was suggested, which is a Pain to Purpose Conference on the 27th, and that's also included in the proclamation. So Walnut Creek had many opportunities. NAMI Contra Costa County will hold your hand and walk through the process if you have questions about how to get there around the mental health piece. That's what we're there for. As I've shared before, more than 35% of our membership lives in Walnut Creek. And so Walnut Creek had this opportunity again to lead an effort to, to really demonstrate in this county that they're really to make a change toward positive. So thank you for the extra time. I don't need anymore. I just want to get an answer back around that proclamation. And also the question I've been asking, will city of Walnut Creek also join other cities in proclaiming the non-police 24 hour seven program? Will you honor us and name it after Miles as other cities have agreed to do? Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Diane Crowley.
Hi, I just got a scary symbol that said rejoining. I think I might have been lost and found again. Can you hear me?
Yes, Diane, hi.
Awesome. Thanks. I have questions and I understand that in this format, they're mostly rhetorical questions. But there are things that I'm thinking about as I listen to these reports and as I have followed all of this since the day that Miles Hall died because I owned a home in the neighborhood. So I've been following it literally since that evening. So some thoughts, some observations, some questions. I understand you can't answer them, but this is what I'm thinking about. When the Hall family filed a lawsuit against the city and the council, they were effectively muzzled because they were named as parties in the suit. Then the city and the council have been characterized as unresponsive and uncaring when they can't respond because they're parties in a lawsuit. First rhetorical question, but I would like people to think about that. This council has been, and the city has been characterized as so many horrible things when, when that isn't the case at all. So one of the big hangups is that DA's office hasn't released their report. I'd like to know what FOSAF has done to encourage Diana Beckton to release that report and effectively untie the city's hands. Second, I'd also like to know why residents of Walnut Creek were refused seats in the listening sessions, but somehow 16 non-residents were included. I find that highly, highly uncomfortable that that's the way that went. Very alarming to hear 16 people from outside the community got to come and community members did not. Also, mental illness and racism are nationwide crises. I'd like to know why this group expects Walnut Creek to solve a problem single-handedly that is so much bigger than it is. Finally, I think we need a.
Looks like the time is up. Next speaker, please.
Catherine Wally. Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you can, Catherine.
Wonderful. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine Wally and I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. My pronouns are she/her. Doing the work to enact positive change in the face of systemic racism doesn't always feel great and it sure isn't easy. I mean, just today I actually signed a contract to work with an anti-racism coach to help me further unpack my own stuff so that I can figure out how to do better. It really isn't easy and it's a very long process. Lifelong, in fact. Enacting positive change requires that we take an honest look at where we're at, see the problems as they truly exist and recognize where we have participated in individual or systemic levels harm, level harms in order to begin building paths forward. It requires that we understand that working with positive intent can still result in harm. And as such, we must prioritize the impact on others over our good intentions. It also requires the understanding that those who are in the best position to understand paths forward are often those closest to the problem, those who are often in the marginalized minority and with the least access to levers of power. As such, we cannot simply decide how to move forward based on what the majority prefers or with what we're used to doing. As that is likely to result in a perpetuation of a harmful status quo. As was outlined in the report of these listening sessions, it was apparent that some in our community do not recognize the existence of systemic racism in our city, including in policing itself. If the existence of this reality is not acknowledged and truly understood, developing a positive path forward will not be possible. It's critical that the city and WCPD leadership take a position that acknowledges the existence of systemic racism and develop an understanding of how it appears in the form of bias, the disproportionate treatment of marginalized racial and ethnic groups and inequities in all spheres of the criminal legal system and society at large. By taking the lead and embarking, embarking on the oftentimes unsettling journey of reckoning, reckoning with racism within society and with ourselves, you will help our community follow suit so that together we can work to enact real transformative change. Thank you for your time and for the resources you've dedicated to conduct these listening sessions.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Pete Bennett.
Sorry, Suzie, I didn't, I didn't hear you and not sure who the next speaker is.
Next speaker is Pete Bennett. Pete, I believe you're on mute.
Or not. There we go. Hi, everybody. I'm Pete Bennett. I've been arrested for 5150 multiple times. I've been arrested many times for being accused of being mentally ill. I've been kicked out of restaurants for being mentally ill. I filed a claim with the city, the mentally ill man who had his car towed away by the Walnut Creek Police. It has car totaled another city by another agency connected to Walnut Creek. Who came forward in the murder of an Asian mixed-raced police officer in 2008. Somebody gave me a car, so now I'm driving and making a living as a driver. Not a great living, but enough. I filed complaints and claims in 2014. Within a week, two officers tried to run me down with a third person. How many times have I talked on this and how many of you spent more than 30 seconds with me? None. You're so disassociated with the problem. All right. And so here's, here's the longest story. On petebennett.net, I'm going to lay the groundwork for how the racism in this county goes back over 40 years. That will include how they killed my black employee in 1982. That will include the former Human Rights Commission of the city of Concord when Timothy Lee was hung by a tree. And then Tanya Poe, who spoke in the LA Times, she was hung by a tree in Lafayette. I'm the one that drove the FBI into the room and said, you gotta come here. Cause then they killed a witness in another one of my civil cases. And now I've got at least five murders in my civil litigation. One of them right here from a person in Walnut Creek that nearly killed me. I never got a police report. There you go. And so I'm on the.
Thank you.
Next, yeah, next speaker is Jackie Lawrence.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, council members. I was gonna do away with the pleasantries, but it feels like it's getting a little heated. So I just want to make sure that I acknowledge again, thank you so much for allowing us this time. I do feel like you're an aspirational city that people look to for how things can be done in the surrounding cities. And I really do hope you take this torch and see it through and be the leaders that Contra Costa County needs in this effort. I just wanted to comment on the report. You know, thinking about building trust between the police department, law enforcement and community members. There are tons of models out there right now. In the last year alone, I listened to two podcasts. I spent two hours of my free time washing dishes, listening to how Attorney General, former Attorney General of New Jersey, Anne Milgram, did that alongside Scott Thompson, the police chief of Camden. So if you have two hours of your time to listen to a podcast, they really laid out how they built trust within their community by the police hosting food carts, you know, ice cream trucks, stuff like that, barbecues, you know, things like that with community members. And also banning the Forest Science Institute and police trainings, not allowing any police officers employed by the city of Walnut Creek to have gone through that training or any training similar to that, which actually encourages escalating situations to deadly results. So I think those are two very quick, inexpensive, rather inexpensive things the city can do to really show they're committed, committed to, to this effort of FOSAF. And I also have a connection personally to three people who were killed by police due to mental issues and two of them were from Walnut Creek, Miles Hall and.
Next speaker is Tom Henry.
Everyone, my name is Tom Henry and I was born and raised in Walnut Creek for the last 21 years. Firstly, I just want to say thank you to Jason and Selena. I absolutely support the solutions and actions suggested in the report. And I encourage Walnut Creek to continue to try finding solutions to the harm caused by Miles Hall's killing. I also encourage city council to continue this process. To the best of my knowledge, we have an all white city council and a city council that didn't run or doesn't publicly, publicly speak about their experience with mental health or anything like that. And as such, it's beholden on all of you as intentional and good leaders to make intentional efforts to better understand the thoughts, feelings and hurts of communities of color. Communities impacted by mental health emergencies and other marginalized communities that you represent, but whose experience you don't have firsthand knowledge of. I also ask that council members enter these listening and learning spaces with humility. And I don't mean to criticize, but I'd rather me to suggest that rather than asking things like, why don't people trust us anymore? Asking things like, what has gone wrong? Asking things like, what has gone wrong with the trust relationship in this community would yield better results. By leaving ego at the door in these spaces, I can guarantee that members would get more from these sessions. In closing, I just want to say overall, I've been extremely disappointed in the response by Walnut Creek to the killing of Miles Hall and by its response to the racial reckoning this summer around the murder of George Floyd. I expected so much more of my hometown and I felt let down again and again and again. I think the hiring of Jason Seal and Associates is a really great first step, but I hope the council members also acknowledge that this report is not a finish line in and of itself. I sincerely hope that council members, both for their own sakes and for the sake of the community, that the city council continues to create and enter learning and listening sessions to further recognize and repair the harm caused by their own actions intentionally or otherwise. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Laura Halpin.
Hello, city council members, city staff. My name is Laura Halpin and I'm just speaking as a longtime community member. First off, I really want to thank the city for dedicating funds and staff and a lot of hours toward this process. It's been very meaningful. And listening to Jason and Selena give the reports and respond so thoughtfully is amazingly heartening to hear the depth and nuance around the solutions and recommendations that they are, that they're putting forth as a result of listening. As I said last time I attended a city council meeting, that we're learning as a community, the value stream mapping, this listening meeting really emphasizes the importance of listening to all stakeholders, especially those most impacted by the issues that we're talking about. And I just want to emphasize what I feel like is such an important point of this report, that lived experience and extensive research confirm that systemic racism exists in society. And in order for any anti-racism or implicit bias training to be effective, the existence of systemic racism must first be acknowledged. And Jason and Selena use the word critical. It's critical that city and Walnut Creek Police Department take a position. And so I want to just say again, the importance emphasis of taking a position that not acknowledging, not acknowledging the reality of systemic racism will not only not make it go away, but it will support environments where harm is inevitable. And by naming it and taking a position, you not only underpin the work and make it more meaningful, but you take those important steps of rebuilding trust. Thank you very much.
The last speaker, I see their hand up at this time, is Curtis Reese.
Hello, everyone. I am, hello. I just, first of all, I would like to say how impressed I was with the report that Jason and Selena delivered to us. It was full of information that, that was presented very well and it stated things that I have in the past struggled to articulate. So I might actually steal some of the data points and use them in my conversations. I was really, really thankful to see that. Also, I was pleased to hear at least one member of the community speak from a different perspective. Perhaps not even not fully agreeing with, with the majority that have spoken tonight. I think it's important that we recognize that there are people that don't fully align with, with us. And that's one of the things that, that Jason and Selena's report clearly, clearly pointed out. I was really happy with that. But I, I think it's important to note that the purpose of the listening meetings was not to solve any problems. It was to essentially diagnose if any problems existed and to point out what those problems were. I think if the analogy is, is a hospital and a doctor, then all we've done is take the patient in for a checkup. The diagnosis has not fully been determined and the path to health has not been clearly, clearly written. And I'm really excited to see what we do next in route to that path to health. It's, there's a lot of hard work ahead of us. The hard work is on both sides. People who believe that there are issues here and people that think that Walnut Creek is a utopia. So I'm looking forward to see, to seeing what we do in the future. And I'm thankful that I live in a city that was at least willing to delve into this, into this world. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heidi Benenson.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
So sorry about that. I thank you for this evening and for the opportunity to speak. I just was curious on the report, on the staff report to the city council on the recommendation. I would love it if we could get a little more information about what is the recommendation, really? It says move to accept the report on the community listening sessions facilitated by Jason Seals and Associates. I got that. And to provide direction to staff as deemed appropriate. I'm trying to figure out where the city council is going to go with that, what kind of timeline there's going to be, so I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any additional hands raised at this time.
Okay, then we'll close the public comment portion and we'll bring this back to council. At this time, if any members of the council would like to make any comments or further comments, this would be time to do it. So Councilmember Silva, I'll start with you since you were the first to pass off last time.
Mayor, it's been two hours. Is it possible that this would be a logical point for maybe a five to 10-minute break? And then when we return, we feel a little more refreshed?
Break. No problem. Why don't we take a 10-minute break and reconvene at IC 757, so 8:07.
Mayor Wilk, are you ready for 15 seconds?
15 seconds. All right, and we're back. So at this point, we will continue the special meeting by going to council members for any further comments and/or questions that they may have. And so let's start with Councilmember Silva, who had passed on the first go-around.
Thank you, Mayor Wilk. I think I have a couple of technical questions, but I don't have questions. I had, I thought the report was presented well to us and the report was thorough. And I understand most of the perspectives that are in there, but my technical question is the the 115 participants, and so I guess I have to see, these might be questions, well, maybe we'll start with staff to see if staff can answer the questions. There were 115 participants in the community sessions. Is that the six sessions or the nine sessions?
I'm going to answer that slightly differently, which is that does not include the participants from law enforcement or city staff. So those were just the community sessions.
Okay. And then there were 65 people who responded through a survey. To what extent were those unique individuals from the 115, or should we just assume we don't know because of the know because the surveys were anonymous and therefore there's probably some, some level of overlap?
There may be. I think we should assume there is some, but we did not track that due to anonymity, as you mentioned.
Okay, so it's a couple of hundred, optimistically, all right. And what we're focusing on tonight, and I'll be, you know, going forward, is really how to take what we've heard from the listening components and transfer that information into all of the work we're currently doing, including the work in forming the diversity and inclusion task force, et cetera. Have I paraphrased that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. The, the outcome of this session was really intended to be a set of data that could be considered by the various groups working on these different tracks. You know, as was mentioned, this was never meant to be the definitive research. This is a self-selected group of people who are passionate about these causes and the intent and the goal was to hear these voices. So there, I think before we go and extrapolate too far, I think there's probably additional discussion and dialogue to be had by the groups that are accepting this data point.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor, that, those were my basic questions.
Any other questions by council or comments by council? Councilmember Darling?
Comment, I might have comments. You came back to me and said you didn't ask questions.
I was looking at it like this was the time to get everything out.
You know, I'm happy to continue my comments, but if anybody else has questions.
We'll, we'll handle any, any further questions first.
So I'll dive in. Steph, as I was looking at this and thinking about next steps, I'm still new to how, you know, staff is working on these things. We've talked about the diversity task force. Do we have any, you meant, some of the mental health actions relating to destigmatization seemed to be somewhat apart from that? Are we, do we have any other efforts underway dealing with mental health besides the 24-hour emergency response program?
So on some of the smaller pieces that have been recommended, yes, we've started talking about how do we get the word out a little bit better about those existing services that might be available to folks as an alternative to calling PD. You know, our city manager is leading a larger countywide effort to look at services and how to really integrate those even more tightly. But that said, I think there's a piece of mental health and probably mostly around the stigma and inclusion and belonging that probably stays with the diversity and inclusion task force as one of those areas that we're looking at, how do we increase people's sense of belonging in the community? And so, you know, that would, that would marry up with a bunch of different types of categories of folks that maybe don't feel fully as though they are included or they belong. And so it's, it's one of many, but I think it is part of what the diversity and inclusion task force will be asked to look at.
Sorry. I know we fund, like, the crisis councils at the high school and, you know, some of those efforts. And I was wondering if staff had thought about how some of that mental health work can work with other things that we're already doing.
Yeah, me, I'd jump in, if I could, Councilmember. I just wanted to add a couple of comments here. So just to elaborate upon what Terry just noted, you know, roughly a year ago, almost to the day when the city's first approached the county about expanding the mobile crisis response team and expanding a non-law enforcement response to mental health care. And obviously, there were some delays with COVID and whatnot. But the effort that's underway now started with that scope. And then through the several months-long stakeholder outreach process, which, which is referred to as the value stream mapping, there were other areas that were noted that came about. And as an updated report will be coming forward, is two other primary areas. One is a, a number to call for mental health crises that everybody could easily get around. That's not 911. And the other is additional locations for people to go other than going to psychiatric evaluation services, other than going to jail and other going, and other than going to emergency rooms at hospitals, which is where the vast majority of folks who are 51, 50, or taken in by family members end up going. So there's this recognition that the scope is much bigger. Now, obviously, part of the challenge is how much can you manage at one time to actually implement? And that's where prioritization would be critical, and that's what's occurring. But as some of those discussions have also occurred, is about the stigmatization of those with mental health and the reluctance to do that. And so I do think that will be an ongoing discussion in that forum. And to your point about other forums, whether it be in schools or elsewhere, I can share with you, when I worked in another part of the state, there were a couple not-for-profit organizations that focused exclusively on mental health that had a slow the stigma campaign. And it was all about trying to reach folks who were reluctant to do so because of the social setting. So I do think there is an opportunity for the city to play in that space, but I also think there are a lot of other entities that do play in that space and can expand what they're doing as well. We may be able to help prompt that.
Yeah, I think not reinventing, but finding partnerships is going to be important. Thank you. That's it.
So you're, no question, I mean, you're done with questions and comments? Is that right?
I got comments, but those are my questions.
Okay, all right. So let's do, we'll, we'll finish the round robin of questions. Luella? No questions. Mayor Protem Francois? No questions. The only question I had actually was, and this may be a better question for Jason and Selena, but perhaps they're off, as how many unique individuals participated? I was just curious. Do we know?
I do not have that number at my fingertips. We know it's the, we know all the people who joined in the listening sessions, obviously, but to, to the question earlier about the survey, I don't know how many overlaps are. There's Jason.
There's Jason.
So when you say unique individuals, are you speaking of like, there not being overlap between?
Correct.
Number of people that attended the listening sessions versus the questionnaire?
I'm, I'm curious. Yes. So how many independent voices, some might have gone to a couple of different sessions. I'm just curious how many independent voices were used for your certain, for your calculations?
You know, that would be hard, one, because, because this was confidential. I didn't keep any records of any of that. And what I will also say is that it's kind of hard because it was, we were trying to maintain confidentiality. So what I can say is that we didn't allow people to attend multiple sessions because we wanted to hear, hear from as many people as possible. So when we think about, we had specifically, we had two sessions for people of color and allies. We didn't have overlap in those groups. We didn't have overlap with the young people. We didn't have overlap with people that experienced mental health crises or issues. And so there was no overlap there. But once again, I think Cindy was trying to bring this point up just around the surveys. We don't really know who took the surveys, right? It was anonymous and there might have been some people that took the survey and participated. But I also know that just based in what we, what we heard, both in the surveys and in some of the listening sessions, there were varied opinions. And so for me, I think it's important to know, it's not like the varied opinions only showed up in the, in like, the, in like, the amenity around the surveys, but they also showed up because, you know, there were, there were, there were two different breakout sessions, one conducted by myself, one conducted by my colleague Selena Wilson. And I think, you know, like I said, we just extracted information as it was coming to us. And so that, that's what I could offer in terms of, you know, the overlap or whatnot.
No, that's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you, Jason. Those are my questions. So now let's go for final comments. And well, we'll just keep the same order going. So why don't we start with Councilmember Silva?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll start by saying thank you to staff and to the consulting team. It was nice to finally put faces to names this evening for your two-member team. And also to the community, I want to thank everyone for the work on these listening sessions and what we've been working on. The report, I think, contains a lot of good information and good ideas and suggestions. And I can understand and agree with many of the suggestions and ideas. And maybe people might be surprised by that. But before I talk about the future and where we go from here, because I think that's what we're going to be doing now, is I really want to make a few comments about our journey thus far. And I'm going to start by saying, I'm truly sorry about what happened in June 2019 and the tragic death of Miles Hall. It's been heartbreaking for the family. It's been heartbreaking for the Hall family, friends, and for the community at large. I think it's also been heartbreaking for our city staff, and in particular, for the officers who were involved that day. And our entire police department. Our police officers risk their lives when they come to work, and they do so because they want to help people. And no one comes to work thinking they're going to have something like Miles Hall's death happen. No one wants that. And, and I truly believe that. Second, I want to say, in terms of where we've been, I am significantly frustrated. We'll say first, because Miles Hall's death has really shown that there is a gap in our mental health care system. It's a tremendous gap. And it's a gap that exists across this country. And I can only speak from that. It could be an international pandemic, as far as I know, but at least I've got a sense of what's happening in this country. And I really think it shows that the system is pretty much an equal opportunity system in many ways. It, it mistreats families of all races and all income levels. My second frustration is just in the fact that we do expect our police departments to be a one-stop shop for just about anything that's happening in the community, whether it's truancy of a high school student, or a mental health crisis, or actual criminal behavior. And I think we're expecting too much of our police departments. And this started in the mid 1950s, and it has progressed. And it's time in this 21st century that we really look at it from a different perspective. And then I'm also frustrated because we, as a city, as a city council and a community, we don't have all of the facts about what happened 18 months ago. In fact, it's been almost 20 months when it happened. And the District Attorney's Office has not finished its job and has not released their report. And that report will serve as an independent evaluation of what transpired and help us decide what to do in many arenas. So I wish that report would come out, so we could be discussing more of the facts and not speculation and tidbits of visuals. But in the meantime, I've decided to choose to be optimistic and look for the silver linings and everything that's happened. And I'm going to be optimistic about all that we've learned so far, all that we've done to date, and where we're going forward. Most significantly, I'm really happy that we did start this campaign across the county to augment and expand the 24 by 7 crisis response, non-law enforcement crisis response. It is important work. We are making huge progress, and we need to continue that work and continue it with our pedal to the metal and keep using our contacts as the five electeds with our compatriots across the county to keep them engaged and involved in this process. It's not just about Walnut Creek. It's not just about the county in Martinez. It's about all of us, making our communities better. I think the work that we're doing with Concord and Martinez and Pleasant Hill, that our police departments are working together, is really important that we support that and continue that effort and be advocating for that with our colleagues in those other three communities, because it would be much better if our departments could help rely on each other for mutual aid for mental health response teams within our police departments, because then we would be better able to respond quickly at any time of the day, any day of the week. And so I think we should be supporting that. And I think the police chief's advisory committee is very helpful. I think the work that we've been doing and will continue to do to expand the toolkit that we have for non-lethal responses to crises is going to be very important. And I think the training that we're going to be providing to our entire police department related to, I'll just call it explicit and implicit bias training. You can call it racial equity, social justice, whatever moniker we want to put on it. I think that's going to be really important because I think there is, we can use the phrase systemic racism, and it sounds very broad. And in many ways, it sounds kind of hard to get your hands around. But I think with the efforts of this training that we would be initiating in the future with the PD, I think there is an opportunity and across systemic racism down to more the individual level, the structural level, the explicit and implicit, so we realize, so we can know it when we see it and be better prepared to tackle it. I'm also, I'm glad that we're augmenting the training that we do across all staff in the same arena. And I never thought we weren't going to be included. So I'm glad everybody thinks that we should be, because I would like to be first, because I think what better leadership role can we play in the community than when we go first? We have ethics training with our colleagues and city staff. We have harassment training. We should be doing this as well. And finally, I will say, I'm glad we've begun the work on the diversity and inclusion task force. And many of the things that have been presented in this report is really the things they need to chew on, because from the community's perspective, that will help first and foremost inform changes in city-based programs and services and hiring, but it will also begin to allow us to spread a better sense of what is systemic racism and how to challenge, challenge it and squelch it. It'll help us, help to spread it across the community. And I will close by saying that our work has just begun. And we still have many mountains to climb and miles to travel. But I'm optimistic that we can do this and use the learnings from these listening sessions as we go forward. Again, thanks to all of you for your hard work.
Thank you, Cindy. Let's go to Councilmember Darling.
Thank you, Mayor Wilk. When I'm approaching this topic, I think we can all agree that we have a common goal. And it's a safe, inclusive, and welcoming committee. And I think all of my fellow council members and Mayor and Mayor Protem would agree with that. And so then we need to take that goal and then take what we've learned here and start to figure how we go from here. And I want to thank everybody involved in this effort. I know it's hard to sit through and talk about issues like this, especially for people for whom it is particularly painful. And I appreciate all of these willingness to be honest. One of the things, as I was reading the report, I was very heartened to see the area of agreement around the mental health response. And I'm especially heartened, we've made great progress on that, and we do need to celebrate that we are getting that key part of things going. I was a little disappointed to see that there was still a divergence of view on issues related to whether or not there is systemic racism. I have listened to stories from enough friends and family and coworkers of how they experience the world. And I have no reason to doubt them, that yes, indeed, they still get followed by clerks when they go to the store. And yes, indeed, they do have people at their high school say things to them that are hurtful. And so I think we, we have the racial equity piece, and we need to work on what's in Jason Seale's report and what we know and find a way to address it as a city, because that's so key to being that welcoming city that feels safe to everybody. I'm also anxious to get to work on some of the mental health components. You know, the having lived, my children are young adults, and having lived through the teenage years with all of their friends and the number of kids who have attempted suicide, who have dropped out of college because of depression. And then I think about what's coming when we come out of this pandemic. It is a monumental task. And I think, as Councilmember Silva reflected, the system reflected, the system is not well set up to handle it. And so we need to look at what we can do, what we can do in partnership with others, what we can encourage our partners to do, to work to assemble a better mental health system that we owe it to our kids and to our family members. So I'm looking forward to taking the results of this report. I think it's a great body of work. It's obviously, I think, as Curtis said, it's kind of a list of symptoms that somebody's identified for the doctor, and now we need to take it. I look forward to working with my fellow council members and staff and the public to map out the where, the when, the how. I'm a process person, and I look forward to figuring out which charge goes where and how we best resource this as we move forward and meet that goal of being the inclusive, welcoming, safe city.
Thank you, Cindy. Let's go to Councilmember Haskew. You're on mute.
All right. I thought about talking about some of my life experience and how involved I was in suicide prevention several years as an online volunteer at New Connections, which was the alcohol and drug treatment grassroots organization that worked in our community. Many people who get into those things are really using self-medication. They didn't choose to be what they were, and they were just trying to find a way to be comfortable in themselves. I could tell you about how I grew up in a multiracial, multicultural school in New York. I could, I could say a whole lot of things, but I'm going to limit it to what I now call the three Cs. And the first one is not only I, but my fellow council members are compassionate about finding the right answers for Walnut Creek. It is, it is out of caring that we all got involved in running for this office, and it is out of caring that we show up every, every council meeting and at every committee meeting, trying to deal with not only the social issues, but the technical issues and, and all the other issues from climate to transportation. So we are compassionate and passionate about what we are doing. The situations that we addressed is the second C, which they're dang complicated. They are centuries old. They are, people have tried and, and, and failed to find solutions. They've tried and come close and then see them unearthed and, and reversed. So it's complicated, and, and we have to understand that, understanding the complications and peeling apart the things that make it doable, takes time, takes, takes us a lot of learning, and that takes it to the final C, and the final C is committed. I know that I and all my fellow council and the city staff and the citizens of Walnut Creek, most of them, are committed to finding the right answer. I don't think any of us want to be called an unwelcoming community. I don't think that any of us want to have people feel disenfranchised. We all want to have a community that works. So now there may be a fourth city, fourth C, and that is community. So compassion, complication, committed, and community. We work to make all of that work together and with great zeal and dedication.
Thank you, Luella. Mayor Pro Tem Francois.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by thanking my colleagues who've spoken already tonight or previously for their thoughtful and compassionate statements. I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the FOSAF Subcommittee who recommended that we do these listening sessions and FOSAF in general, and our city staff who worked hard in collaboration with them and with the Jason Seales team to facilitate those listening sessions. I would have liked to have seen them happen sooner, but they happened, and that's the important part. And I think as a result of those listening sessions, we gained a lot of valuable knowledge and feedback. I read the report. I found it very comprehensive and helpful. I also had the opportunity to participate in one of the listening sessions with the mayor, and I found it helpful as well, especially the breakout sessions where I felt people were free to exchange their views in a, in an environment that felt very safe, safe and comfortable to me. And I think it did to others who participated as well. I think there's a lot of good suggestions in this report, and I look forward to continuing the dialogue on implementing those. I think if we break them into the two big categories of mental health and systemic racism, I think on the mental, both, I think we have a lot of work still to do that we're at the beginning of this, this process, this journey. But I think we've made, we have made some, some progress, some substantial progress on moving forward on non-police responses to those adults suffering mental health crises. I think that there is a larger systemic and problem with, with folks who suffer from mental health. I just, I don't, as Councilmember Darling said, I, I don't think those resources are there for those folks. And, and I was, I was heartened actually to hear about this Clubhouse International in the report, because I think services like that, which I view as akin to sort of a Trinity Center for people suffering from mental illness, are perhaps a path forward and things that don't exist right now in our society. So I didn't know about that, that organization, and I was heartened to hear about that. On the systemic racism part, I think we all have an obligation, especially as Black History Month comes up next month. And as a history major, myself, my wife teaches history, we have the opportunity at the dinner table to talk about things like Reconstruction and the Voting Rights Act, and explaining to our children that for many Americans, they were denied the right to vote until the federal government stepped in in 1965. So the Civil War certainly wasn't the end of their struggle or journey, and I think we're living with the scars of that still, and need to have open and frank conversations about that. And I think it needs to happen at all levels. It needs to happen at the city level and in schools and churches and in communities, and we need to be open and honest with one another about those things. And because I think, I believe in my core that we all share a common value of equality, that, that everyone gets a fair shake, gets a fair shake, or should get a fair shake to a quality education, to a good-paying job, to a decent home, to a safe and welcoming community. I, I think we, as Americans, and as I know, we as on this council share that value. And I think putting that in action is the challenge that we all face is, is to make that a reality for all of our fellow residents. So I think that what I'd like us to do is, is take the information, the valuable information from this report and that the community provided to us, and use it not only in connection with our, the mayor and my work on the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force, but also in our priority setting, which will take place over the next few months. And again, I want to applaud all the speakers who spoke tonight and the people that, that listened and attended, who, I was really impressed with the comments that were made, whether they were pro-city or anti-city. It seemed like they were all done in a very respectful way, that, that seemed to be sharing that, that common goal and vision of, of making this a more inclusive and welcoming place for, for all residents. I look forward to the hard work ahead, and, and I'm glad that I'm able to undertake that task with the four of you and, and with our city staff.
Thank you, Matt. Well, first of all, thank you to everyone who participated in the listening sessions. And again, thank you to Jason and Selena. Also, thank you to all the speakers tonight who spoke on this important and challenging topic with respect and decorum. This has been a long and thoughtful process and something which I'm glad we could complete during the pandemic, when, when this had been originally scheduled and conceived well prior to our state shutting down. And, and I do want to thank my fellow council members. I think that, that your comments are well received, certainly within the council for further discussion, and hopefully within the community as well. And a look at this report is important to let the members of the community who wish to be heard to be heard. This certainly isn't the final word, and there's a lot more to be done. This process to help us all arrive at a place that we feel is inclusive and equitable. And as an aside on the mental health portion, my own younger brother suffered from mental illness and passed away three years ago. So that portion of the discussion hits home for me. It's just one reason why I've been a strong advocate from the beginning for a county 24/7 mental health crisis response team that includes Walnut Creek. Miles' death was, is a tragedy for the community, none more than Scott Ton and Alexis Hall and, and their family. Nothing will bring him back, and it's incredibly heartbreaking. Hopefully, this process can be seen as a way to create something positive for the future. It's understandable that some of the comments have been quite impassioned. I think it's important to remind everyone that many things that were recommended were in progress in one way or another prior to the pandemic, and well before the heinous killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis in May, and the looting event and the protests that followed it. Well, we've talked about this before, and we heard it from some of the council members tonight. I want to reiterate that following the tragic death of Miles, the city has already approved and implementing, or have already started, things like the Chief Advisory Board. We heard about the task force, the Diversity and Antibias Task Force that'll be occurring shortly, the listening sessions, obviously, we've had, and the Advanced Skills for Crisis and De-escalation Training for the City Police. We've approved less lethal alternatives for police department use of force when necessary, as well as Diversity and Antibias Training for all city staff. And yes, Cindy, I am looking forward to participating in that myself, and approving a 24/7 mental health crisis response team run by the county that Walnut Creek can participate in. So all of these are in various stages of progress. And we recognize that there is more to be done as well. And this report helps provide a guide toward further discussions in these areas. And these will take time. They'll all take time, because the wheels of government never move as fast as we would like, but they are moving forward. And our direction as a city council has never wavered from this. Unfortunately, as Councilmember Silva had said, we are still awaiting the DA's report on the Miles Hall shooting. It's been over one year since we were first promised it, and the delay is causing the community, city leadership, and the Hall family unneeded angst and frustration. It's also caused the Walnut Creek Police Department to be judged without the full findings of the DA investigation. This is unfair to all parties, and we again implore the DA's office to release this report for the sake of everyone in our community. We aren't perfect. Our work in the city, which includes leadership and police, is continuing to evolve. I'm confident that our police are more familiar in best practices in working with the community in a variety of circumstances, which include 911 calls and protests. And with the trainings we've outlined and the 24/7 mental health crisis response team to come, that confidence will increase exponentially. I think there was a blind spot for me, and maybe others, of what feeling safe in Walnut Creek felt like for everyone. I hope that everyone in our community, including visitors, feel safer in Walnut Creek as a result of this entire journey that we're going through together. And thank you again to everyone for your involvement in this important process. And so that's just to kind of summarize everything. Unless, unless anybody has any further comment they would like to make, I think this brings us to the end of our special session. Again, thank you to staff and to everyone involved. There's a lot of thoughtfulness we have to continue to look at and work on, and, and we look forward to doing that together. And so we'll adjourn, and we'll see you all.
I wanted to see if staff needed anything else from us.
No, I think we've gotten great direction, and we will fold this into our upcoming efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll adjourn this special session for the city council, and we'll see you at our next regularly scheduled council meeting one week from tonight. Thanks, everyone.